I nominate Doug. For position Chair and Chris for the position of Vice Chair.
I'll start at that motion. Okay, are there any others? All those in favor of that?
Fight.
Fight. I serve at the pleasure of the board. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the group of the minutes for the last two meetings, July 29 and August 13. Oh yeah, that's sorry.
I wrote it wrong on the agenda. I said June and July. So thank you Doug for fixing that. I'm a month behind. On the agenda, I wrote June and July, not July and August. So thank you for correcting it.
It's not August.
Don't. No, no, you said that.
I said it wrong.
I'm sorry. I know, I'm trying to, I'm trying to, I'm making it worse.
So should I?
Do these have to be separate?
Call the main daughter?
Can we do the vote?
Do these have to be done as separate?
They don't have to be. Sorry to make a motion.
I make a motion to approve both the minutes from June 29 and July 13. As written.
There's a couple little.
There are? Okay. What would you like to?
Well, we can, but it's nothing really. If it's misspelled. Or user needs, I guess it probably needs to be updated, the radio.
Okay. Has been updated, uh, D.
So. Little off.
So, so I'll second.
Well, normally I wouldn't vote on a meeting that I didn't attend, but I listened on YouTube. So I think I can, I think I can vote on it. The other thing I noticed was last meeting, July, the July meeting, it says some people were not present, but they were present. But am I, am I reading that right?
Once I read them.
Oh, for this meeting?
For the 13th.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, this is, they should be.
Oh.
Attending, they should just say others.
Others.
Others present.
Yeah.
Oh yeah.
See, that's what happens when you skim through it and think you read. Yeah.
It should be members present or other members present or other others.
Others.
Others present, rather than members. That's right. Okay.
Eagle.
So. So.
I saw you here. So I, I will second Chris's motion and make a suggestion of a friendly amendment for the changes that we've discussed.
Second. Okay, so it was a motion by Ken, second by Joe to approve the minutes with the amendment, the changes that were discussed. All those in favor? Thank you. Next is Department Report and I'll pick on, yes Paul?
May I go first?
Oh yes.
I've got to pick my wife up in Wilson and she just texted me, I'm ready. I don't want to keep her waiting.
Don't want to keep Sherry waiting.
Um.
Take that.
Thank you for letting me go first. Um, we had the national night out last night. We're very well, had a good turnout at about 90 to 100 people. Fire department was there, Public Works was there, fishing game, credit union, women's.
Lions.
Lions Club and.
Library.
Library was there, yep. Everybody got to reconnect. Um, but it went over well and I was happy with the turnout and I appreciate those who came, enjoyed some of my cooking.
Except the hot dogs. Except the rolls.
Yeah, so that went very well. I was happy with that turnout. We finally got. Our internet line straightened out after about. Seven hours of having the two agencies together working to get it corrected and they came back today because there was some, some problems that they wanted to correct. And so. I'm on my own internet now and in compliance there. So that's working well. Other than that, we're just one step at a time, working ahead, working one step at a time to get everything in place that we need to get in place at the PD for. Upgrade the computers so we can actually get into maybe the 20th century.
Chief, is this the, the list from the audit that was done a couple months ago?
This is part of the compliance stuff that needs to be in place for the audit. Yes.
Okay. Good.
We're making headway. Any other questions?
Send our regards to Sherry.
Off to the big city I go.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. I'll start with the good news. The used one ton wild truck, Sander truck, we were able to pick that up late last week. Somebody who started last night at the national night out. Truck is, it's been, it was a good purchase. Half the price of new, couldn't even get a new one if we wanted to. It's gonna go a long way for the longevity of our equipment. So that was a good purchase. Thank you for that. Thank you, Justin, for helping with the back work on it. Uh, I spoke today with International about our dump truck that's been on order for over a year long before my time. And that is finally going to production in the next couple of weeks. Uh, so hope to see it on the ground. Mid, late September. HP Fairfield said they have all the equipment for it sitting on their lot and their technicians are eagerly awaiting trucks to come in because they're just, nobody's got any trucks coming in. So. Uh, should have it by Halloween. Thanksgiving is a worst case scenario. So that was a welcome piece of news today. Um, to the bad news, but it's partial good news. The Beaver Brook, Wilson Pond Culver, I told you last time we were going to tackle it, we did. Uh, when we got into it, it ended up being a lot worse than we anticipated. So we were able to make a repair that's solid, that should hold for a while. Uh, but the culvert, half of the culvert was basically collapsed and destroyed. So the little repair we're going to do had to go to a very large scale and thankfully it worked out. Uh, well, the road is stable. Barring monsoon rains, I think it will hold. Today I met with Rob Crew from Energy Engineering out at the Culver to discuss options. He thinks it's a good repair for now. Long term, we're going to have to replace it. Um, and it's actually short term. Ideally, the culvert is not adequate for that amount of water and that crossing at all. Going forward, if it presents problems in the short term, we can do an emergency repair. We can replace the existing 40 feet of four foot culvert. And put it back to what it is now. Um, but it's not adequate and it would be a short term. It would be a new culvert, but it's going to be short term. We'll continue to have to fight it through the years. That would have a cost of around $25,000. Um, the two pieces of culvert are $6,000 a piece. I would have to hire somebody with a large excavator to dig down that deep and to be able to place the culvert and then the new aggregate gravel and fill to go back in. So figure, you know, 10,000 and, or 12,000 in culvert and 15,000 in, in an excavator and material. So 25,000 give or take. That would be an emergency repair solution that would get us back to where we are with it, with a good culvert, but not adequate for the stream crossing. There is, Justin can say even more, but there is grants for stream crossing culverts out there. They've upped it to about 150,000 that they'll match to the town. Rob's assessment today is it would probably take a 25 foot box culvert, which is the cement box. It'd be one of the biggest ones they make, one of the biggest ones he's ever put in. He will do the research and verify the flow rates of the water and the dimensions and verify that's what we need. But he thinks that's where we're going to end up. Ballpark cost, just today, throw in a number out so I could give you guys some info, 350 to 400,000 to replace that. Per correct DEP Environmental Protection Guidelines and for that type of section there at that road. So. That's where we're going with it at the moment. Uh, he's going to prepare all the information, work with Justin and myself. We're going to get it submitted into the grant program. And see if they'll approve us, what they'll give us, and then we can present going forward, what those numbers will look like. We'll have hard numbers. In the short term, if we have to do something, we'd be looking at 25 to 30,000 outlay to do an emergency repair on it. So.
Did I hear you right in saying that DOT might have a. Grant that would pay up to $150,000 of that cost?
DEP. Thank you.
Not DOT, it's DEP.
DEP, environmental protection.
Okay.
Yeah, we could get up to 150.
They do this to encourage people to put the right stream crossing infrastructure in for wildlife and all that stuff. They're trying to partner with town so we do it correctly.
And. Uh, this type of crossing sounds very similar to the one that was done about five years ago on Sandborn Road. Does that make sense?
It would be, yes. It'd be on that scale. Solid for now. We, we just wore on borrowed time and. Hopefully it'll make it till we can have time to make a good decision and appropriate and responsibly. If not, then I'll, I'll have to do what I'll have to do and, but you know.
So essentially that road only serves the campground. So if that had to happen. I know that Sandborn Road was closed for a little while, right?
Uh, yeah, that was closed for.
So.
Like a month.
Exactly. So.
It's.
Hello, sorry, you can't go to your campground, you know, if it takes place during the summer or preseason.
Yeah, it would, it would be a summer, late summer, fall job for sure. You'd have to wait for the spring runoff.
Yeah.
To end, the waters stabilize and then class. So they, they would be looking at a major inconvenience.
Yeah.
And if I have to do an emergency repair where I replace what's there, they'd probably be shut down. I was a whole day just doing my repair. I'd say we'd be shut down two days out there.
Yeah.
If you're already in the campground, it might not be so bad. If you're trying to get in.
I'm not super familiar with the campground and all the exits and entrances. I know they do have alternate ways. They might not be ideal. Obviously, if we have to do something of that caliber, we'll make them aware and give them as much notice as we can to make other arrangements and to make it as. Less of an impact on them as possible. Um, but it's, it's a.
There is, there is a back door kind of thing. You could have to, I won't tell you.
Is it, is it a Willywack backdoor?
Off of Rocky Dundee or?
Well, yeah. Rocky, it's that first road off Rocky Dundee.
Okay.
You go down there and then you turn left and it's where Burnham lives. Ralph Burnham has his place down there and, and that road keeps going. It's kind of, I mean, I'm, the only way you say I know, but it's going to run through there and. And so you can get in the back door. It would be passable with a car, but you wouldn't haul a camper.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
I mean, if, if it's a project they could do like October, um, if it was during their season, that's going to be a major problem.
It is. There's, there's no way around it.
Well, and unfortunately, the salt on the.
I was in and out of there before.
An assault on the wound is we're paying for road access for property taxes that go to other towns.
Yeah, I've seen, I've seen the map, the property lines. We have, we have a few campsites, a couple.
I, I think it's in several counties, in Anderson County as well as Kennebec County.
Yes, Wayne.
Wayne Leeds and us.
Very interesting.
Dan, did you look at that, the Beaver Dam that's kind of holding the water back into the bog?
Yeah.
I've heard there's a lot of water in the bog right now.
It's, it's up there. The owner of the bog wants that dam removed. That's, he's making, it's his land. He's making his arrangements to deal with it.
Yep.
I am, I'll be made aware when it's released so I can do daily checks on that culvert to see how it's holding up.
It's a lot of water.
It's a lot of water, which the culvert, even if it was 100% structurally sound, is inadequate for the amount of water that bog produces. Which hence brings the, the issue of putting in the right culvert that'll get us 40, 60 years of service instead of. Emergency replacing what's there and getting 10 to 20 dependent.
Dan and I were joking, if we could move some of those beavers from there down to Cocknowag.
Well, exactly.
They'd have that thing fixed.
I got rid of them at my house.
It'd be permanent too, I'm sure.
Who's the owner? I thought we gave a bunch of land there to Kennebec Land Trust. We represented the former owners. It's been recently sold. They canceled it. They've sold, I think. Maybe three or four months ago.
I'm not sure. I, I met the gentleman. I. He lives on the dirt portion of the road. His last name might be Hafford.
Hartford. Dennis Hartford is the property owner where the.
That's right.
Yeah, he owns a lot of land out there.
That's all I have until we talk about payment later.
We'll hear from you later.
Yes.
The, I, I put the, the RFP for the solar thing back out again because it's the same one as last time. It's just that we didn't have permission from the town's vote to do that yet. So that's out there. The town office will be closed on August 22nd, 23rd. The staff is attending the trio annual training. It's a free training. It's two days. It's, it's down in Portland. Basically goes over, that's our municipal software that we use for everything. So it's just that they do updates every few years and then they have these training events so everybody knows what they're doing. The Lori and I will be attending the main town and city manager association annual meeting, um, March 10th through the 13th. The 10th is your next meeting. So I won't, I won't be here for your next. August, 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 I don't know what I'm talking about. The number dates are right, but it's August, okay? 10th, 11th and 12th of August. Uh, and the good news is, is the, the, the divers that we talked about for the Cocknowag and Dam, they have, they have squeezed us in. They're leaving Hudamaki and they have a day. Before they go on to the next thing. So they are going to be here tomorrow. So Dan and I have been scrambling to get them all the things they want. If you see a big trailer in the town hall parking lot, that's them. They're going to go out there tomorrow. They're going to borrow the fire department floats that are down, that are attached to the town float. They're going to drag them around so they can put their pumps on. All the sand that's moved down in front of the dam, if you've been down there, it's, it's in front of the entire gate. That, that's not supposed to be there. He, he, he went down there today and look, I don't think Dan and I really knew what it was supposed to look like, but that sand is not supposed to be up against that gate. So they're going to pump that sand out and push it back out into the lake. And then they're going to go down in there and they're going to, where the, where the hole is, they take basically industrial Saran Wrap. They put it in the hole and then they blow air so that it follows the, the path at which the water is going through and then it hits the gate hole. It blocks it and then they jam plywood down in front of it. And then that will make, that will make the damn hole on a temporary way. So that we have enough time basically to go through the winter, go to next town meeting when we figure out what it's actually going to, they'll find out what the real damage is down there when they remove the sand. And then they'll be able to give us an estimate for the actual fix. So cross our fingers after tomorrow, we, we can, we may be able to shut the thing down. And if it ever rains again, the water level can come back up to normal, normal levels. So that's what, that's what, that's what we're hoping for. He's confident they can get it done tomorrow.
So this is a temporary plug essentially?
It's a temporary fix that he says will hold. It could hold for multiple years. They do these same repairs on all of the Brookfield dams, which are all the commercial dams here in Maine. So this is a normal thing that they do all over the place. And we're very confident that it will fix the problem.
What's the expected cost for it?
He says, um, he's having us buy some of the supplies and he was asking for as much stuff that he could keep out so he didn't have to bring his own boat and all that stuff. So he thinks he can do this repair for $4,000 for right now. So that's great news compared to the, the contractor who, who went out there, said they wouldn't put any equipment on the ground for less than 120 because they don't know what's down there. So this will be, hopefully we'll have some good news on that. That's, I think that's it for me.
But this doesn't cure the, the problem with that old mechanism to raise.
No, it doesn't. But, um, he went down there today and he already was, he knows what it's supposed to look like and how it's supposed to operate. So I. I have a feeling that we're going to get a list of sort of suggestions after they're done tomorrow. But you're right, we still will have to do something about that. But I think this will get us to a point where we can, we can take a breather. We can work it through our normal budget process and then, and put it to the voters at the next town meeting.
And just to make sure I'm hearing you right, we can, we'll be able to safely hold the lake level up at an appropriate level.
Yeah, he's confident that.
If we can get the rain.
Right. It's a temporary repair, but it's, they use it all the time to do all kinds of stuff. So I think it's, it should get us through.
Dan, do you know what the water level is on the other side of the tracks at the upper end of the lake? Is that still plugged and really high? That's, has drained through now with the lack of rain that's dropped down?
They opened it about, uh, two, three weeks ago. They, they were in there and they actually took the Beaver Gate off. And let the water run through and I don't believe they put the Beaver Gate back because it was pretty damaged.
Yep. So it's.
It's down.
Whatever was up there was already into the lake.
It was at, and was at steel level. It was at the top of the rail.
Yep. They worked with us a little bit, right? Dan, you, you had a conversation with them about how they were trying to drain the lake and please don't do it until we get it down some.
They cleaned it because you can actually see the bottom of the culvert now. It's out of water.
Yep. Yeah. And Ann called me and asked me if it was okay to do it. And I said, certainly. I said, FYI, the lake is at historically low levels. So. If you want, this would be the opportunity to get in there, really clean them out. And, and from what Dave has told me, that's what they did, which will be good for a few years till the beavers.
It's not even a few years.
I know, a couple of weeks. So, um, yeah, so yeah.
So the beavers are still there.
They're everywhere. Yes.
They're not at my house anymore.
Just the same beavers in Campville as well?
Yeah, they have, sell the same tree. Around, yeah. I'm fighting beavers at every culvert crossing that we have in town.
You get permission from the beavers to do this?
Well, it's, it's a negotiation process, pretty one-sided.
But I know a nuisance trapper that I've used for a long time. And I mean Carl, Carl's busier than a one-armed paper hanger, but I've been using another guy. That loves doing it. So.
I, I, if you want to form me as information, I'd be happy to make some contact.
Well, I'll rate it to everyone.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Justin, have we ordered the transfer station stickers?
We haven't.
Haven't done that yet.
Had a chance to get to that.
Okay. You're anxious for your sticker.
We did talk about it.
It's a low number. Yeah, I want, yeah. I'm looking for like, yeah, it's a personal thing, right? I just want.
You told me that's how it used to work. The, the chair got one and the vice chair got two.
Are you serious?
Yeah.
Tell you what, give me whatever.
You're going to get some provolence.
I'll get number one. I think I had three. That's.
Wow. I want to be number two in the number one business. It's really the other way around.
And Justin, where, where are we on the audit for fiscal year 2021?
So what? What I have done is I had a conversation with, with Mark, who's the, our new finance person. And, um, he's, he is willing to help us do the fiscal year 21, but he wants to get us fully on boarded with payroll and everything before. He kind of loses focus. So what he told me to do was contact RKO, tell them to disengage with us for now. And that by late August, he should have the payroll up and then he will work on that next September. RKO said that they thought their busy schedule, they thought they would have a week in, in sometime in October that they could come in and they'll do 21 and then Michael will move on to 22, which is the year we just finished. So I think we're going to get caught up here in the next two or three months, which will be fantastic.
Which will be fine because then we can assemble a budget based on, based on the most recent financial.
That's right. That's, that's, that's our hope right now. So I think we got a plan.
Uh, have you heard anything about the. Water survey in North Monmouth?
No. I got, I got a copy of it. It, it came to the, my town manager's email address.
Okay.
And I, I looked at like the first page, but I didn't scroll through it or anything.
Would you mind forwarding that to us? I, I think, I think we should all.
I didn't know if. If they had included you all or not.
No, no, I haven't seen it. And just. For the record, um, uh, the engineering firm was hired by the water association to start the process of. Uh, looking at the feasibility of a public water supply for the parts of North Monmouth that do not have it, but have. Uh, contamination in groundwater there.
Yeah, right.
Uh, yeah, with people, a variety of PFS type chemicals. So, um. There was a recent survey sent out as part of that process. This was. Uh, for the new members of the board, uh, we authorized $80,000 to be up, up to $80,000 to be expended on this pro, project. Uh, this was the one time. Money from the federal government. And just recently there was a paper survey sent to a number of residents. Don't know exactly who. Uh, but a number of residents in North Monmouth got a paper survey asking them questions about to what degree they want to participate and. Uh, if there was a public water source available. Uh, to what degree would they be able to afford hooking up and paying operating costs, yada, yada, yada. So. That's a process that the previous board authorized, um, the association, the water association is doing. Um, and you may get some folks calling you, uh, just asking questions about, uh, what's going on. Uh, I know I got a few phone calls about that. Uh, one of the things that I think was part of the. Uh, RFP process when the engineering firm applied was some sort of, uh, public meeting. To explain the survey, maybe the results to date, don't know. Um, but that would be part of the process would be. Uh, some sort of public hearing or public, public participation. We'd have to do that. Yeah, I don't know if that's going to be, uh, the select board doing that, or if it's just going to be the engineering firm and, and the water association organizing that. But, um, that's part of the plan is to have, you know, to give folks the opportunity to have, um, some participation. Uh, we've also, it's also come to our attention that, um. Text tech has been voluntarily, uh, testing water in the neighborhood. And, uh, and then notifying residents of their results.
It's been. Not good. Uh, it's been a mixed bag.
Have they been testing for that? Which was the expensive water test for them? Cause I understood before, were they going all out and?
My understanding, and again, it's third hand, so take that for what it's worth. Uh, my understanding is that text tech has been. Testing groundwater in the neighborhood for quite some time, prior to there being a standard for safety with PFAS. And now that, now that the standard for safety with PFAS has been established in the state of Maine, text tech has included. That particular test as the one that they are doing.
Okay. Onto. Select order report. I guess we're kind of into that anyway.
Uh, there was a question about the Anvesco boat launch that Justin emailed me about.
Yes, if somebody who's running a fishing derby or something.
Sure. Um, uh, and for the purpose of a fishing derby, there is public access to the. Sure. Um, uh, and for the purpose of a fishing derby, there is public access available at Augusta West campground.
Okay.
Which is free unless you want to park and then it's going to cost you.
Okay.
So uh, and it's like 20 bucks a day or something like that for overnight. I don't even know if it's, it might be less for a day's parking. Uh, construction is underway. If, for anyone who's been down the Holmes Road, I'm sure you've seen a lot of uh, activity. They've made it almost all the way to the water. They were sort of precluded from being able to get into the water by uh, some requirements from the Army Corps of Engineers, which basically said you have to wait to the end of fish spawning season before you can go into the water. That was technically July 15th. So uh, if they're not in the water now, they will be soon. Uh, in terms of doing what they need to do to install the concrete floor that goes underneath, uh, not into the bed of the lake. Uh, my understanding is that they are on track for completing the construction process this year, this construction season. So they'll have this thing open by the end of the season.
I, I know. Is the state that's building it?
This is inland fisheries. Yep, main inland fisheries and wildlife. I know they had to, they had one minor hiccup. I think they kind of expected it. They had to wait for a blasting company to come in to remove some ledge, which is complete. And so they're back to, you know, doing the construction process. But in the meantime, if anyone wants to run a fishing derby, they can go to Augusta West campground because there's public access for trailer boats there. And there's public access for carry-in boats at the Jug Stream access point. Um, we did have a conversation a while back. I remember Mark had asked a question a while back about uh, the Wilson Stream uh, Bridge uh, access point. And uh, and the restricted zone that's there, that's currently there. Uh, we did, the, the Lake Association's got like 30 different volunteers that are participating in a survey of the bottom of the lake, looking for uh, invasive milfoil. The good news is that the herbicide treatment that was done a couple of years ago was super effective, but not a hundred percent. So we're still finding occasional plants. And this May, we found about a dozen plants in that restricted zone that were genetically tested and verified to be the type of milfoil that would take over the lake if you, if you, if you let it. So uh, scuba divers who called in at the cost of like, I think it cost the Friends of Calvesy like three or four thousand bucks to bring in a scuba diver team to remove the plants that were found uh, there and in a couple of other places around the lake. And I haven't had the conversation with the Lake Association as to whether there, uh, there's an appetite to to do away with the restricted zone. Or modify it in a way that says, hey, maybe we could do canoes and kayaks, but not motorized craft. Stay tuned on that. We'll, we'll, we'll see which way they go. But it is on my mind.
How expensive was that chemical treatment they did to?
Eighty grand.
So they're not going to jump right on and do it again?
No. Um, no, in fact, the only reason they did it when they did, and it was sort of first in the state to be allowed such a, an invasive type of process. The only reason they did it was because uh, it would have cost 10 times as much to bring in scuba divers to, to remove that, that the amount, we had 10 acres of milfoil.
To be considered successful, given the fact that they found 12 plants.
Oh, absolutely.
Treatment of success.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. I mean, we had uh, prior to the herbicide treatment, we had uh, forty, forty thousand dollars worth of scuba divers who were manually pulling out plants and they weren't keeping up. We still had 10 acres of milfoil at, at the end of that. So, so it was super successful. And if you go over there, when we were doing the survey, we went over there to sort of look at the bottom. You can see that uh, well, the first year afterwards, there were like, like pockets of desert where there had been milfoil, it choked everything else out and uh, and nothing else was growing there. So it was just muddy bottom. And uh, this past year, moving over there and, and you could see that stuff is starting to fill in the deserts and, you know, the native stuff is coming back. So that's definitely a success. But it's not at a point where it would warrant a re-treatment with herbicide.
Anybody else?
Um, I just wanted to find out if we could plan another um, meeting this fall, like we did last year with the RSU, to have our RSU members and whoever maybe the superintendent at that point in time. Just because I'm concerned about the turnover and what that means for, for us. And also, you know, six million dollars worth of RSU that we have to pay for. So, so it was good to have a discussion with them because I thought it was helpful last year.
Did you just meet with the Monmouth reps?
The Monmouth reps and the assistant superintendent and superintendent. So obviously, if, if Matt Gilbert's only staying till September 30th, then we did it. He was getting ready to go moose hunting or something, wasn't he? So that had to have been like in October-ish. So he was leaving to go up to his camp to moose hunt. I remember talking to him about that, but anyway, I, I think that's when it was, it was like October-ish, but I think that's important for us to try to get on the same page with them. So we don't have the butting of heads. Which we will, but maybe less.
While we're talking about meetings, uh, we discussed having a goal-setting meeting.
Yes. It'll probably be, I, I was thinking maybe if you're all amenable, maybe the second meeting in August, because I won't be here the next month.
Oh, I, I had a question about the uh, beach playground stuff. Have you heard anything about that?
No, um, we, we heard um, a month or two ago that it was, it was still just delayed. I, I don't know. I haven't, I haven't checked on it again in a while. Like, I can do that.
And I was, I was wondering about that, that wall back there. Is there a builder? There likely is. As long as everybody's in agreement, I can repair it. It's not a big, you know, it's a few hundred dollars maybe. So do we need a motion or?
It depends how you guys want to handle that. If, if it makes me more comfortable if you guys just kind of all agree somehow, if you just nod your heads, I'm okay with that.
I'm fine with, with.
I think we should make, we'll make a motion. Okay, that's fine. I make a motion that we uh, that we, we hire a contractor to fix the uh, wall at the back of the building. Uh, not to exceed five hundred dollars in cost.
Is this the back of the old?
That crack right there. Someone ran into the building and then uh,
ran away.
So uh, I'll second it. Okay. Kent's made a motion and Joe seconded it to uh, uh, spend up to five hundred dollars to repair the uh, back wall of the meeting building, the sidewall, the meeting. All those in favor?
I will abstain on this one. Wise man.
And uh, Mark has obtained, there you go. For the record, for the. Uh, one, one thing I had, I, I ran into Joe Fletcher yesterday, the day before yesterday. He said he was supposed to be coming back to give a report for the committee. Their last meeting, there was like three people that couldn't be there. So they canceled the whole meeting and he said he has nothing to report and that's why he's not back here tonight.
Uh, speaking, speaking of that, this is a kind of a question for the town manager. Where are we? We, we had a conversation, I think, at the last meeting about advertising for some of the vacancies that we have in the various committees. And where, where do we stand on that?
Kimberly was, was on vacation last week and she's the one that reached out to people and that she has on her list of things to do. So I will, I will remind her tomorrow. I put a note on her desk, but I will remind her to post those.
And, and the, oh, the vacancies with uh, for the, of the town community works.
Oh, they've been. They're all posted. We're not having uh, great interest. We had somebody that would, it would have been great. He had a class A and everything, but our pay scales aren't, aren't high enough to, uh, to get him. So yeah, working on it, but it's.
Yeah, I've had, I've had no applications for the transfer station. I, I made some internal promotions, um, but the only applicant I had from the outside for, for a truck driver position, um, we made an offer too and it was declined. Uh, and as Tom had just said, basically just do the pay. Um, but you know, they, they liked the town benefits package that we had and all that, but uh, you just didn't have the pay scale to, to be competitive.
We don't have the flexibility because those are unionized positions. So I can't, can't leapfrog people that are already here directly with our hands tied.
We did the best we could, but it wasn't enough, wasn't enough. But they're still posted and I'm trying um, talking to, you know, people around the other town, Department of Public Works and then DOT people that there's, there's not a public works out there that's fully staffed right now. Um, I'm not the only town that short two, three people. There's at least a half a dozen within, within a half hour's drive of us. So it doesn't make it any better, but we're not the only ones in that boat. So we just have to see what, what comes forward.
Justin, could, could you um, fill us all in uh, on the results of the appraisal of the CMP substation?
Sure. So I forwarded the, the uh, documents um, to you all last week. Basically, um, his, his valuation increases the CMP values by about $10 million. When you adjust that by our certified ratio, it'll, it equals to be approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in tax, depending on what our mill rate comes out to be this year. There was some question about where that money would go. Since the TIF has been, since the TIF was founded, the town has been budgeting a flat hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year to go into the TIF budget. You, you all have the right to set that to 50% of the increment, which is the increased value from when you created TIF until now. So 50% of whatever the increase was before the substation was built to now that it's standing there. Up to 50% can go into the TIF if you so choose.
And what would that dollar amount be if we chose to be?
So.
I mean, and this would be for a future budget, not the existing.
Yep. So the total amount, just off the top of my head, it says about 30 million. Now we increased 10. So we're bringing in approximately 300,000 now, give or take, in, in money from the value of, of the CMP assets overall. And 120 of that right now is being, is being diverted into, into the um, TIF. So if you did 50% of 450,000, that, that would be, that would be about the max with 225 would be about the max that you could put into the TIF at, at the most.
And uh, what would be the advantage to the town if we decided to, to do that? If we had budget priorities to spend that 225,000? What would be the?
In the TIF?
Yep, from, from TIF funding.
Okay, so basically, TIFs are at their most useful when you're, when you're able to put general fund expenses that are, that are acceptable to go into the TIF, the things that you're already spending money on, right? So for example, easiest example that I can come up with is like the city of Augusta, when the gas lines came in, they tipped, they tipped all, they tipped every street in the city. So because the gas lines tear up the streets, they're now able to pave streets throughout the city with TIF money. So they're sheltering it and they're using it for things that they would have spent general fund money on. So that's, that's basically the tip-top of what you can really use TIF money for.
And the advantage of TIF money is that it's sheltered from county.
The value is sheltered from state valuation, which impacts the amount that it goes for your RSU spending, uh, your RSU assessment and your county tax. But, but if you spend all of the money on, on things that are outside of general fund scope, then that doesn't overcome the money that you're spending elsewhere. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So if you create all kinds of new things to spend it on, yeah, the advantage that you get there, you've just given away to something else. You really have to think about what it is you're going to spend that money on if you're trying to, if you're trying to balance that with the tax rate.
So I, I, I realized that in her conversations with the Economic Development Committee, Reagan Maruchal mentioned that there were some expenditures that would have been approved by the state if we decided to revise the TIF language that we're not currently doing.
Yep.
So things, for example, like a portion of the fire department budget. Or a portion of the town manager's salary that's dedicated to economic development, for example. Um, those types of expenses, we're not utilizing because it's not in the language of the TIF that, as it exists right now. Uh, but we could put it into the language of the TIF and then use this uh, TIF money to pay it. And thereby create an economic gain for the town because we're taking what is currently paid with general fund revenues and instead pay it with TIF fund revenues where we sheltered some of the.
That's correct.
Some of the value.
Yep, that's true.
So at, at some point in the near future, I wonder if we could put on our agenda as a, uh, the select board for inviting Reagan in to help us get our arms around exactly what language we might want to see. Because uh, if we do want to make a change to the TIF language, then we would need to go to the voters to get them to approve that before we send it off to the state for approval. And the timing of that would ultimately, I, I think would, if, if we were in the blue skies version, we'd probably want to try and make the November election to have something ready to be put on the ballot because we don't have to call a special election or do anything.
Yep, typically, typically what you would all do i- is you would brainstorm what you might want to spend those things on. And then Reagan would run that up the flagpole without a formal application, D E C D. You, you have an informal uh, conversation with them and you say, if we gave you these items, which ones are no-go right now, which ones might work? Because you don't want to go through the, the, the TIF application. We'll have to hire an attorney to make sure that that TIF, so there's expenses to go into that. So you don't want to do that on something that is clearly never going to pass muster. So you have like a brainstorming session and then she could take that and run it through the state process. You'll get feedback about whether it's, whether it has a shot at all. And then you can, then you can decide what you want to move forward on.
But at your last EDC meeting, you, there were some really interesting things that, that could be done with TIF funds. That we're not currently not doing. Yeah, and I can't remember what they all were, but.
Uh, the, the number one priority for, that, that we heard from the survey of voters was that they wanted to see something about walking trails, investing in walking trails and uh, protecting lakes and public access to lakes. Those were, I think, the highlights. I think there might have been a few more details in there that I'm skipping over, but, um, but that was sort of the flavor.
Yeah, more like outdoors, opportunities, recreational type of stuff.
Some of that falls into the category of new things that we're, we're not doing currently and we're not really saving the town money if we decide we want to do them. But there are also in a different bucket of items, changes that we could propose at the same time. There are things that we are currently paying with general fund revenue that we could pay with TIF funds. And save the town some money. Because we're using sheltered money to pay those expenditures. And so I would suggest that, and maybe this is part of our goal-setting meeting. And so I would suggest that, and maybe this is part of our goal setting meeting, second, second meeting of, of August. They kind of dovetail together perhaps, um, that at that time, maybe we could bring in Reagan to help us understand the, the nuances, what might be likely approved by D E C D, the state people for a revision to the language. And then, uh, and then we have a good chance of having something ready for the November ballot, in, in time for the November ballot and approval by the voters. Has CMP been notified that they're underpaying, that they're not paying their fair share of town taxes?
No, they won't not, not until the next tax bill goes out. If you guys accept this, this appraisal when we commit later in August, they'll find out when they get that bill.
And what about retroactivity? They've been underpaid? If they've been underpaying for years?
No, it's a valuation issue. You can't, you can't go back on valuation issues. The only things that you can, you can go back three years on things that y- you didn't know existed. So if you had a, if you had a, a, a piece of land and you got a building on it and we didn't know about it and we only taxed you on the land portion of the commitment book, we could go back three years on the house because we completely omitted it. But if we said the house was worth 20 bucks and, and we, we left off some zeros and it was really 200,000, we're out, not the taxpayer.
When, when we, um, when we did the, the TIF agreement, uh, Mike Rogers, who you probably, you know, probably know he works.
And used to work for you.
Yeah. Uh, he, he figured out, he looked, he looked at a lot of spreadsheets, a lot of numbers, and he decided that, uh, the, the 120 was optimal, uh, for us to use. For some reason, which I, which he probably knows, but, or could understand, but I can't. And, uh, so w- w- we wouldn't, we could change that, right? You're saying, because you know all about that stuff.
Yeah. Your TIF agreement with the state allows you to take 50% of the increment. That's what you applied for when you did it. You applied that you could retain 50% of the increment. The other 50%, you can't get at unless you do an amendment to go upwards. If you increased it, um, past the 50% and you surpassed the amount that we're taking in general fund. Now you're essentially taking revenue out of the general fund. And therefore you'd be, you'd be essentially driving the mill rate up. So when you have new revenue like this, it's okay. But like, if you increase it after you've kind of already implemented the 120. So, so if we kept assessing it at the same amount and then you decided you wanted to increase it to 160 or 170, you're directly taking that money out of the general funds. You, you're increasing the tax rate to put it into the TIF. So that kind of once you pick a number, you really can't go higher than it unless you come up with new value.
So because we have new value, then we've got a one-time opportunity to reconsider.
If you want.
The new sweet spot, the new point at which we don't take anything out of the general fund. Um, uh, but we're capturing as much value as we can from the additional valuation.
There is an analysis, Doug, that you can do where, where, where you take the amount of what the shelter is helping you um, save from the school in the county. And at what point, if you keep spending TIF dollars, that sheltering now is, is now below, the benefit from the sheltering is below your spending level. So I'm sure that's what Mike did when he did it as a way to calculate that. It's fairly complicated, but you can do it. You can figure out exactly what that number is before you start having a diminishing return on your, on your TIF.
He, he showed that with a lot of numbers.
Yeah, I'm sure.
And, and, uh, anyway, okay. So uh, we're done with the, uh, public, public comment? Public comment. Uh, next is to consider the ballot for the MMA Executive Committee.
So this is a nominating process. Some of you may be familiar with it. There is a committee that's set up internally by the, by the past president. And then the current president appoints, um, non-executive committee members. Um, they look for diversity and sizes of municipalities and where they're located in the state. And then they try to, um, pick a slate of, of people that kind of represent all the different sizes of the, of the, uh, municipalities. And then they, they go to have that slate basically ratified by the municipal officials in each, uh, each municipality. So, um, the vice presidential term position that automatically becomes the president the following year. So we never vote for president. The vice president serves as that for a year and, and leads the legislative policy committee. And then they move into the presidential, um, spot the following year. So the slate here is Diane Hine. She's currently on the executive committee with me. Um, she's a town manager of Bloodlaw and Reed Plantation. Ivan McPike is currently on there. He's seeking his second term. He's the mayor of Hamden. Um, Phil Crowell is the city manager in Auburn. He would be a new member. And Anthony Ward is the town manager of Casco and he'd be a new member too. So if you would like to, um, approve that slate, you cannot, you can either sign your names here or you can authorize me to do it, whatever, however you want to make a motion. If you want to make a motion.
Looking at their, uh, uh, resumes, the, oh, the information we were given, I was surprised. Maybe, I don't know. Two or three, maybe two of them, maybe three were all in, uh, police chiefs. They were all involved in law enforcement.
Yeah.
And when moved into, uh, being town manager.
It's not that uncommon. For some reason, I think it's because the, uh, police chiefs have the opportunity to retire earlier than some others. So they're, they've kind of gotten to their retirement age and their pension plan, and then they kind of move over into the municipal management role. So I worked for Phil, uh, when I was in Auburn and he, he was obviously the police chief in Auburn, um, for years. And then he became the assistant city manager. And then when Peter left, he moved into the number one slot. And Anthony retired, I think, from the city of Portland as a, as a police lieutenant or a captain or something. And then he was recently in Sabatys, who's the manager. And he, he became the police chief in Sabatys and then he became the town manager and now he's in Casco. It happens more than you think, really. It's kind of surprising.
Yeah. Yes. Yeah. Interesting. So what, what, what would you like? You know?
I'll make a motion to approve the slate and have Justin sign the document. Make it easy.
Yeah, I'll second that motion. So Chris made a motion and Mark seconded it to, uh, approve the, uh, the, uh, the slate. Okay. The, uh, ballot of, uh, election of those candidates and have, uh, Justin sign. All those in favor? Thank you. Uh, next is, uh, to consider a request to close Main Street for Apple Fest on September 24th. We have a letter from, uh, Scott Ainsworth.
I mean, the motion that we approve the request to close Main Street for Apple Fest on September 24th.
I will definitely second that one.
Okay. So a motion by Chris, second by Mark to approve the closing of Main Street for that, uh, for, uh, for that period of time on, on September 24th for Apple Fest. All those in favor? Thank you.
Yeah, we'll have to figure out how we do that because it's a state road. So we have to, we have to tell them that we're going to do it. And I don't know how to do it. When we were on an island, I didn't have to tell the state anything. So we could close streets all day long. So we'll have to figure that out.
Well, it's been done for years.
Yes, it has been. I think it's just a notification that, that the municipal officers have requested it. I think it's that simple, but we just have to figure out who to ask, who to tell, or whatever it is. We'll work on that. Yes, we can have to tell Paul, of course.
Well, I mean.
He might know how to do it. I don't know. Somebody at D O T, we have to tell.
The police chief does it every year.
Okay.
So just what?
He's new too. So, you know, this is nobody here that's done it. Okay.
Okay. Next is to consider the paving recommendation for the public works director. He's given us a lot of.
Yeah, I gave you a lot of numbers. Um, my letter that I wrote up that Justin forwarded to summarizes it, uh, with my recommendations and my road recommendations. So um, I don't have a copy of the letter I actually sent out. I have everything but so, um, there's a lot of information. I, I could probably talk for a half hour on this, uh, but I guess it's, well, let's ask, what do you have for questions? We'll go from there, um, based off the letter I wrote.
Well, I know that we've discussed Blue Road repeatedly and I've had people complain to me about Blue Road. So obviously, and then we know that Sanborn Road has a big issue. So.
Yeah.
Is it all, is it all of, of Blue Road?
It is not. It is only the section from Main Street to Norris Hill.
Which I think is probably the worst section anyways.
It is by far.
And then the, then Norris Hill is just the section.
From Blue Road up to Academy.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Uh, yeah. I put out nine roads to bid. All needing resurfacing. Um, once the bid prices come in, obviously with the economy and the price of asphalt materials, labor and fuel to go with it, uh, the bids were as expected, astronomical, good high. So I had to, uh, tear the bits apart, compare them apples to apples, make sure we were making uh, the right choice on who we went with for a contractor and also looking at the roads, uh, what I'm doing was approving the five roads that I feel are the most traveled roads of the group and most in need of being resurfaced and being kept in, um, good to above average condition. Hence the recommendations of the South Mama Road portion. The small section of Oak Hill Road, which I just consider a continuation of South Mama Road, the way it lays out. Uh, Sanborn Road, the Norris Hill and Blue Road sections that we just talked about as well.
And so what roads are we deferring to later?
We're deferring Oak Hill Acres, Town Farm Road, Bonin Road and Wilson Pond Road, uh, or a large section of Wilson Pond Road. They all need to be done. Those roads need to be done. Um, they're just, it's just not going to happen with the budget we have, even with the wonderful budget I have to do with, with this year, uh, which I thank you guys for. It's just not that funny to do them all. So they will have to be deferred. And in looking back through the history of what's been reckoned for paving, a couple of these roads have already been deferred once. So this will be their second deferment. Um, so they'll be staring me in the face next year when I'm working on paving as well. So.
People will know when they hit the, on the line on the Town Farm Road because if you've been down there, Litchfield reconstructed their whole end and they're going to repave it. So the Litchfield end will be a highway and then they're going to hit that town line and they're going to know what they've crossed over.
Well, that's all right. Right now, I, I've been down there. Right now we're looking pretty good.
Yes, right now we look great. By the time Paul rolls around, they get the road done.
And, and, uh, what's going to happen with, what, what's your recommendation for Cressy Road? And, and Pine Hill?
Cressy Road is dependent on, on the paving numbers. Um, I have bids on the Cressy Road from contractors. But I needed, we needed to solidify paving before I had a discussion with Justin on what the numbers are and what we really can do. It's going to be very hard, if not impossible for me and my crew to do anything to Cressy Road. I, I'm too short staffed. I'm just, I don't see I'm going to have a month to give it, to haul gravel and spread it and get it right. So I'm hopeful to have a contractor, one of the bits we got to do it. However, it's, it's dependent on how much is left from paving.
So those are kind of your choices, right? So if, if Cressy Road is a priority, you're, you may have to take something out of this list, an additional road out of this list. We, 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 we also have to consider whether, right, whether paving Comston. Of the Hall. Comes to Hall parking lot because these, we don't have enough money to do all the stuff. So you guys kind of have to set your priorities. So those are kind of your choices. If you want, if you want those other two things done, then something has, probably going to have to come off of this list.
Potentially. My ideal situation is that with going with my recommendation of mainly paving is the contractor and their quote per ton price that we can pave the five roads I've recommended, it will leave enough money to do the Cressy Road appropriately. Remaining gravel, obviously. And it will most likely mean not doing anything at Comston Hall this year for the parking lot. I, I just don't see a way that we're going to get around it.
But we did get a good price for, for Comston.
We had a phenomenal bid on Comston Hall parking lot. Um, and it, it pains me to have to think of, of, of denying it, but.
What was the bid on, um, so we're looking at.
Yeah, I did.
We're looking at a spreadsheet and this is just for, for folks at home as well who are listening in. We're looking at a spreadsheet that is a portion of what might be possibly spent. Do we have a sense of what the other pieces might be so we can sort of figure out how to fit them into the puzzle? Like?
Yes, we have prices for all of it.
We do. I just didn't present. I didn't want to present everything tonight. It would've been way overwhelming and too much to come up with the, the answers.
Okay. So, so how much, what, what's your, what's your bid on Cressy Road?
Roughly 140,000.
Okay. And what's your bid on Comston Hall?
51,000.
What if it, it, the part of Cressy Road that's impassable or not good? Is it, is it at the end of Pine Tree Road?
No, it's a hundred percent.
It's the entire two mile section.
So they can't go out to Route 202. Cressy Road runs from.
202 to, to Pine Hill. Correct.
Right. And that whole section is what would be, uh, needed to work.
Correct. You know, um, there's a couple of spots we could pass over, but it's not beneficial. We're not doing ourselves any favors by, by skipping a couple of sections.
Yeah.
Because once you get the contractor out there and they're working, they might.
So 140 and we had appropriated 60, correct, of the ARPA funds, right? Is that, or where? Right? For Cressy? What did we do?
I know that number from Harold, he presented was like 18,000.
18,000 left.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah. And that, and that wasn't necessarily just for Cressy. It was whatever was left in the ARPA money for that second, um, tranche was going to go into the, in, into the paving reserve. So whatever's left, we, we don't really know right now, but. But we thought it'd be about 18 at the time, but depending on, you know, what the, what the condenses come in at Comston, some of those other.
So what I'm hearing you say, and let me make sure, let me repeat it to make sure that I've got it s- straight. You've made recommendations for five roads. Blue, Norris Hill, Oak Hill, Sanborn and a portion of South Mama Road. And you've given us, uh, figures, uh, in spreadsheet here. And in addition to those five roads, um, we know that we have, uh, bids from contractors who are willing to do Cressy at 140,000.
Correct.
And Comston Hall for 51.
Correct.
We, we know they're all pressing needs. But the question is, how do we fit them into a finite budget? And your recommendation is pave these five roads and leave Cressy and Comston off?
No.
What's your recommendation?
Our recommendation is that we figure out what roads we need to pave. And then at the August 10th meeting, I'll have time to re-crunch the numbers with Justin, come up with a recommendation and present it to you August 10th on what we do with, with the remainder of the, of those two projects and what we have for money. Um, I'm, you know, and I believe the, the paving bids, uh, Dave, like I'm asking you to recommend mainly paving, the bids, you know, total is just shy. It's like 481,000. The actual bill is going to be lower. As I tried to explain on this, on my write-up, the the, the mainly paving bid was for a three-quarter shim and a one and a quarter inch overlay. Which is why in the spreadsheet I show you is tonnage and his overall price is a little higher than the second closest bidder, Allstate, which I also put on there. Allstate's did a thinner shim and a thinner overlay, but their per ton price was almost $5 more per ton. Allstate did a thinner shim and a thinner overlay, but their per ton price was almost five dollars more per ton. That's what they felt the roads needed. That's why they bid that way. Mainly paving looked at the roads and asked me what I wanted him to bid, and I said, and I told all the bidders, I'd like to have you bid a three-quarter shim and a one and a quarter overlay. Because that is the ideal amount of material down on the roads. In talking to all the bidders, we we can do a half-inch shim on most of the roads and most of the sections. And a one-inch overlay will be appropriate as well. So when you look at that. And put that into the numbers of the mainly paving at almost five dollars less per ton. We should see a fairly significant savings. I hesitate to throw you a number. Because I don't have one, but I would say in the ballpark of. Four forty to four hundred and sixty thousand for the total bill from them, but that is. My guess, that is not a hard number from him.
This is an RFP that we've kind of used all along, but we've gotten feedback from the bidders that we should really, we should specify that and not kind of let them. Not let them decide, because you know, you've got one that's saying three-quarter and one saying half, so that we have to do all the work to back out of it, and it would have been better if we would have. Been very specific about, you know, this is what we want on this section, this is what we want on this section, but we didn't know, but. We've gotten that feedback, so in the future, we'll do it.
Yeah, but we'll do it a little different. Yeah, I used the past models month is used. Obviously, it's my first year doing it. So, you know, there's always room for improvement, so and I'll take their feedback and then next year it'll look a little different, and we'll see. How we can make it easier for everybody involved. So I am asking you to approve up to four hundred and eighty thousand for mainly paving, because that is the total of their bid. But the number will come in less, but I I don't dare to put a number on it and then have to come back and ask for more. I don't think that's in good taste.
And what's our total budget?
Six hundred. Six hundred thousand.
And the paving, oh, I'm sorry, Ken. The paving companies obviously are anxious because they're running out the clock. And they want to make sure that we have time, so we really don't want to put them off another two weeks, or whatever decision you make, it would be beneficial if you did it tonight, basically.
At this rate, maybe look in the paid end of August versus September.
This includes like usually get, I think, a hundred and seventy-five thousand from the state?
It's not that much, but yeah, we get that money, but that money is. It's general fund revenue. We don't dedicate it to to paving.
Yeah, we said six hundred thousand is the expenditure. The one seventy-five or one fifty or whatever it is we get from the state is just revenue.
We have to show the state that we that we spent at least that on road maintenance, but that's not hard to do, right? With our public works budget and everything else, so.
So maybe a hundred and fifty thousand. Left, right? I mean, there's some. And then we need a hundred and forty for Cressy Road, so that leaves ten, well.
For Comston.
And if we're doing the sidewalks at Comston, and if whatever happens with the sidewalks on Main Street. You know.
Well, you know, the nice thing is the sidewalks are a couple of years out. And this by no means is to to. Put Comston not on the priority list, but this is their first year, and I know they've requested the lot be redone. Not that that makes it any easier or better to deny them this year, but. It's a need, but all of these roads are need and there's. Next year, I'll have to forward all these roads that we passed, and I have, I already have the list of the roads that are. Already in need now, but it was just not even practical that I'll have to put out next year as well.
So, I mean, I'm fine with that, because first. Obviously. Lots of taxpayers drive on the roads all the time, and yeah, we have Comston, but not everybody drives into that parking lot. For as much as I love the building, and it's it's important to me.
Person that last winter was the primary person plowing that lot, I can tell you, in the winter with the frost, it is rough, it's not fun. It takes a lot to keep it clear, keep it safe, but. In, you know, in this economy at the moment, it's it's a tough call, but I think at the moment, we have to prioritize the roads and and push it, but.
Doug, you're the other Comston Hall trustee on the board here. How do you feel about that?
Exactly what Chris, I was I was gonna say the same thing, that. You know, and it's it's something that can wait, as far as I'm concerned. I mean, I'd like to see. I was thinking, we can just in back where the where people park, back off the the hot top. You know, maybe, you know, fill that in, but you know, I I don't know anything about it, and I would assume.
Oh, in in my bid, I had asked for those sections to be. Filled and hot-topped, and amazingly enough, in that fifty-one thousand is to those two sections. Which I say just. Shocked me to to see that low of a number and it's. I hate to pass it up, I really do, but I, you know. We just have to make tough decisions this year.
It seems like we're doing triage here, and I I'm gonna move that we take the public director's suggestion and do anything that he recommends.
I'll second that.
Okay, so Joe made a motion and Chris seconded it to follow the Public Works Director's. Suggestion request that we. The bid be for. Four hundred eighty-one thousand, a hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. All those in favor? Did I say that right?
Mention the company.
Yeah, yeah, probably, yeah. Using maybe me. Did you need this?
I just want to make a couple of points, though. Having voted in favor of that recommendation. That any savings. That we're able to work with the contractor on in terms of appropriate specification. Be dedicated to the Cressy Road. But the leftover, any savings that we 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 are able to realize. As well as any of the remaining funds available in that line item. Be dedicated to the Cressy Road. I don't want to go through another spring. Listening to the residents of Cressy. And knowing that we didn't do anything, well, we didn't do what we could to solve their problem. So I'm I'm saying this for the record. So that we have, we have this. Recorded. The other issue I think that is important for us to. Understand is. Our undesigned fund balance. We don't know exactly where that is. At the end of fiscal twenty twenty-one, because we haven't finished our audit. We haven't finished our audit for a number of reasons. I I get it. I'm very interested to know exactly what our undesigned fund balance. Is, because when we made the decision to to dedicate additional funding. To help us get caught up on some of this deferred maintenance. We did so understanding that. It makes no sense to have a savings account be huge. In an inflationary environment where it's losing nine percent per year. That makes zero sense. It makes negative sense. We're losing the town value. And I'm saying this on the record as a reminder to the rest of the board that when we come, when we finally finalize our audit. And know very precisely what our undesigned fund balance stands as of the end of fiscal year twenty twenty-one. That we're we're gonna start building a budget for next year. And we ought to take a microscope to that undesigned fund balance again. And ask the question of our auditors. You know, do we necessarily have to keep such a large balance? Or is there a way that we can dedicate some of this savings to put it to work? For the taxpayers that actually paid into the savings account?
What we know, it's about two point one or two point three million.
We don't.
From from the last audit.
From the last audit, but since the last audit in twenty twenty, we've gone through an entire fiscal year, we generated revenue, we've had expenses. We've gone through two fiscal years, so I mean, the undesigned fund balance accumulated over a number of years because. We've been very prudent about spending less than we've been taking in. And and so we've got a huge savings account, which we dedicated some to paving this year. And I would just say, let's take a second look at that once our audit is in. So that in the next budget cycle, we can sharpen the pencil one more time. And see if there is room in our undesigned fund balance to make another. Bite at the apple with regard to some of this deferred paving maintenance, road maintenance in general.
Why wouldn't, we we know there's more than two million dollars in our.
Yeah, we don't know exactly how much, though. We know it's more, but we don't know how much, because we're waiting for auditors to tell us.
Yeah, but and our auditors say we only need about a million. Which is a lot more than a lot of towns have.
That's absolutely correct. I mean, our auditors would tell us. I mean, the general recommendation of the auditors is you need enough in your undesigned fund balance to be able to safely cash flow the 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 town. Right, the town.
Usually between eight and fifteen percent of the of the municipal general fund.
Right.
Have to take tax anticipation notes in between tax dates. You don't want to do that, because you're. Paying money to borrow money so that you can operate. You don't want to do that.
And it's and it's an administrative pain in the butt.
All the time. Right, and you know, we never use.
Right, we never, so. So, I mean, we we don't wanna, we don't. We don't want to get so close that we, in in terms of cash flow that. Justin can't sleep at night.
I want to have to tell Dan to just shut down Public Works for three weeks, because if we don't have the money to buy gas.
By the same token, we don't want to have. A huge amount of cash on hand when that cash is losing value. Every month due to inflation. What you want is, I mean, this is what the auditor's job is, is to tell us, make a recommendation, where is the balance between? Cash flow, you know, expenses and.
You economic skies, you know, they call that the the dismal side.
It's the only one besides the weatherman where you can be paid to be wrong.
I have a quick question. So what, we just voted for the four hundred eighty-one thousand. Does that give Dan the authorization to spend the other hundred and some thousands left to do the Cressy Road project, because I didn't hear that.
We're gonna wait and see.
I'd like to take it up August tenth. If Justin and I can. Have an agreement and make sure, you know, we're all set with him not being here, then it'd be great to do it then. The contractor is kind of beating on my door for an answer, because he has to make up a lot of gravel, but. If we can't take it up August tenth, we'll take it up August twenty-fourth. But yeah, it's 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 right there. I just didn't want to put the cart before the horse.
Who who is the contractor for the gravel?
They were the little bidder by far. Thank you all for your confidence and.
Next is. Mark number two for twenty twenty-three.
Okay, so you should have all gotten your email for your for your docu-sign approval. We'll get it to you because you. Are you getting your emails properly now? Okay, good.
I am.
Okay, so. I don't have a a list of the one thousands for you today, because this came out so late, because we were making adjustments at the last minute. That's why it came to you. So late in the day, but per. Our disbursement policy, what is required since you're signing outside of the meeting. Is as the treasurer, I'm supposed to, I'm supposed to declare publicly the total amount of the warrant, and that's that's what's required under the policy and state law. So it's seven hundred and fifty-one thousand, two hundred and three dollars and eighty-four cents is the the total for this warrant to. Fiscal year twenty-three. That being said, I just wanted to ask you, now that you get, now that you'll be getting this thing in advance. Before I ask Mark to put that list together, do you all still want that that thousand-dollar list? Put together that that I've been reading off in the past. I just want to get a feel for whether you still want to do that or not.
Do you think townspeople want to hear it? Know where the money is going.
Okay, yeah, I think I think for for transparency and and the public record.
Do you still want it to be a thousand, or do you want it to be a higher number than that? A thousand dollars now doesn't get us very far. It's for pretty small purchases at Public Works, but. You want to do like five or something like that, is that?
No.
I think I think we're hearing, yeah, I I think we should just stick with.
I'll just ask Mark in the future to to make me up a list, and you said he'd do that, but.
Okay, and and Justin, for the purpose of tonight's meeting. Perhaps, I mean, I'm happy to, in fact, I think I already signed off on the warrant. So that we don't gum up the works in terms of issuing checks and making sure that vendors are are paid. But perhaps. We could at our next meeting, or we could. Have the thousand-dollar list for this warrant just read into the record so that people understand.
I know off the top of my head that the big expenditures in here, obviously, is the school. It's all the one-time payments we made to MMA for our insurance and stuff at the beginning of the year. And it's the and it's the loan payments for the the truck, the police cruiser, and it's all those initial loan payments that we made for the leases that we took out this year. So that's that, that's what the big items are.
So stay tuned on the details. We'll get back to that.
Yeah, I'll get it. I'll get it for you.
I have it here, I mean.
Is it a thousand? Is it the thousand list?
It's not a thousand list, but I mean, I can read what they are. I'm looking at it. Andres Goggin Bank, eighty thousand, three hundred and. Four dollars and forty-seven cents. Baker's Roadatilling, that's roadside mowing, seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Capital One Public Funding. A hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-six dollars and five cents.
What is that?
I don't know. Capital One Public Funding.
That's the that's the fire truck.
Fire.
Fire truck.
Grimmel Industries. That's.
That's our.
Our waste. So three thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars and fifty-eight cents. Main Commercial Tire, three thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifty cents. Main Municipal Association, twenty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Main Technology Group. Fourteen thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars. Monmouth Fire Auxiliary for the Beach Party Second Half, fifteen hundred dollars. RSU Two, so happy to read it. Four hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, sixty. Sorry, four hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. Sixty, I'm not used to reading numbers this large. Four hundred eighty-six thousand, sixty dollars and forty-six cents. Runyon, Kirsten and Roulette. Nine thousand, nine hundred.
It's our literature.
Yeah. Bureau Motor Vehicles, six thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars and ninety-six cents. Stevens Farm and Greenhouses. Two thousand, one hundred dollars. And that's it. That's that.
Do we need, if we're doing the docu-sign, do we need a motion at the meeting?
You do not. You can continue to do so if if you want to, but you don't have to. Our our, the new disbursement policy authorizes you to sign the warrants outside of me. So your signature's on there. Allow that practice. I just have to read the total, but.
Make a motion to approve.
You don't have to. We don't have to. We don't have to. It's our discussion, so.
Yeah, so. What would you like?
So I make a motion, we approve warrant number two for fiscal year twenty twenty-three.
No, second that.
Motion by, can second by Chris to approve warrant. The two for twenty twenty-three, all those in favor? Thank you.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second, all those in favor?